Back to this now? All right. Okay. I hereby call to order the Wednesday, April 24th, 2024 Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee Open Meeting. And the first order of business will be to rearrange the schedule if it's the whole of the committee. Because it's supposed to go school choice hearing, retire, re-recognition, and special recognition. But I'm going to suggest that we do the retiree recognition and the special recognition for the school choice. Does anybody have a follow up? No, let's go.
All right, so I'll ask John Sousa to join me. So your favorite experience is being recognized publicly. John has been working at Algonquin Regional High School for 19 years, so almost two decades. He has done amazing job as a custodian. He's taken great pride in the work that he's done and treats the building as it's his own. As many of you have walked through Algonquin and commented on the amazing building and its funniness and how it looks after many years since its renovation, a lot of that work is a testament to people like John. He also is willing to help out at a minute notice. Most recently, we had a situation in Southborough that required some weekend work. And we put out a call and John stepped up and spent a significant amount of time helping a difficult situation in Southborough. So we're just very grateful for your years of service.
Thank you.
And thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you.
And as a small gift of our appreciation.
Thank you. I've got no way to more to say. Thank you everyone. It was nice, very nice. He was like a real person. All those guys there, see? All of you guys, I appreciate for that. Thank you very much.
And the good news is John is on our sub list.
Yeah, they don't keep me in homeless. I like it's nice.
But anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
And then we have a couple of special recognitions. We have two school committee members who will be retiring from their school committee duties for a short period of time. I think they're just going to take a short break. First Karen Ayers. So Karen has been on the committee for a little over four years. We count COVID years, pandemic years, multiplied by seven. It's 21, 22 years of service. So we just thank you for your commitment to students, for pushing us in the area of career exploration, thinking about how high schools can really support students and provide many different opportunities. Thank you for the contributions you gave around professional learning that we did. So we are very grateful to your years of service and you will be missed. And we have a recognition from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives. And this is from Kate Donahue, the state rep. And basically it's just in honor of your dedicated service to the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District. So that is from.
Thank you.
Representatives.
Thank you.
And then now, wait, Senate.
Oh.
And also from the Senate, it is in recognition of your dedicated service. Be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success. This citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to any copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate, signed by Karen Eastvilka, Michael V. Hurley, and Senator Robin Kennett.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also want to recognize Kathy Keating. So Kathy has been on the committee for nine years. So she started when I started, so 2015. She has been a staunch advocate for students, has been committed to the work, has been amazing on policy subcommittees, and really has been a great school committee member and really advocating for the school, students, and the community. She also holds a record for the longest graduation. She had, I think it was nine hours of standing and handing out diplomas during COVID. So she was the chair as we entered into the pandemic and did an amazing job making sure that we were on target, that community was informed, and that we had everything we needed, and that we were doing what's best for students. So again, thank you for years of service. You'll be missed. And you know, here's a small gift of appreciation. Two citations, one from the House of Representatives from Kate Donahue, and then this is from Senator Jamie Eldridge.
Thank you.
And I did promise Karen and Kathy that we're going to extend this meeting to about 11:30 just to really savor their last meeting. And this evening, we also would like to recognize the Harbinger for its amazing work.
Sure. Yeah, so we have several members of the Harbinger staff and our Harbinger advisor and photo advisor here tonight. So as you probably know, or as I've reported, I can't recall exactly, our wonderful school newspaper, which everyone here knows is the best around and probably the best in the state, probably the best in New England, but Columbia Scholastic Press Association, which is the most prestigious student journalism body in the country, has, over time, acknowledged our students' incredible work and the incredible voice they lend to our students. And this year, they put a fine point on that by awarding our student newspaper the Gold Crown, which is the highest level of achievement that the Columbia Scholastic Press Association can award. So we brought them out here tonight to just thank them for their hard work and to celebrate that as a real extraordinary achievement. Our two advisors, sorry. Lindsay Copens is the advisor, and so Lindsay's giving us a wave. And Michelle Shepherd is our photo advisor. And behind Michelle, we have some of the photo journalism that is such a hallmark of our wonderful school newspaper. And then on this side, we have our editors-in-chief, Rhea Mahanta and Catherine Wu. All right, and we have, yeah, so you can introduce the other students as well.
This is Rhea, our photo editor. This is Hal, our news editor. This is Lindsay, our sports editor.
And this evening, we have a lot to celebrate.
Cass is here, just on our end.
We're so used to having Cass. So we have a lot to celebrate this evening, so we do have cupcakes. We'll take a five-minute intermission and enjoy cupcakes.
Along with this award, we have a very large plaque, which is my office. We're trying to find a good home for it and trying to find, and this is kind of catalyzed an interest I'm undertaking in finding a home for lots of our academic and other non-sports and non-music awards. And I think we can do that, and I think the Harbinger is going to lead the way in that. We, it's, they rack up hardware, the Harbinger. So congratulations, guys. We're very proud of you.
And cupcakes.
And enjoy.
How are you feeling?
Good.
Oh, you getting better?
Yeah.
Well, enough of you are. Okay. So let us now go back to the School Choice Public Hearing. And I guess, do I have to officially gavel that open? I will officially gavel open the School Choice Public Hearing.
All right, I am pleased to share the annual public hearing for School Choice. I did convert my slides to PowerPoints, but not quite working as I anticipated. But I'll just speak to the slides. So School Choice is an inter-district program that has been in place in the Commonwealth since 1991. It allows a parent or guardian to enroll their children in a school other than the district in which the child lives. And under School Choice law, all school districts in the Commonwealth are presumed to participate in and to admit non-resident students through School Choice unless a receiving district withdraws from School Choice after a committee holds a public hearing on the issue and then votes to withdraw from the School Choice program. The School Choice tuition for students in a regular education program is $5,000 per student. The per pupil expenditure for the North Borough/South Borough Regional School District in FY22 was $20,836.66. There is some flexibility that the committee does have when thinking about School Choice. The school committee may specify the schools or grade levels in which seats are available. And therefore, it is permissible for a school committee to limit the admission of non-resident students through School Choice to specific grades, programs, or schools. So in Algonquin's situation, it would be grades. So if there was space in 11th grade to accept School Choice students, the committee could just accept 11th grade students. When admitting students through School Choice, the nondiscrimination policies of the district And what are the advantages of School Choice? So it is a way for many districts to generate revenue. It allows for flexibility in enrollment if enrollment declines. And an advantage is that it is year-to-year decision to opt out. But once a student is accepted into School Choice, that student has a right to complete his or her education in that district. The disadvantages is that there is a discrepancy between the $5,000 per pupil money that we receive for each School Choice student and the district per pupil expenditure. It's significant. Acceptance is by lottery. And once a student is accepted, the student remains in district through grade 12. And then there is a potential for a student to acquire significant supports that will far exceed the $5,000. So there is a risk, again, depending on students who are accepted and their current needs. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions around School Choice.
I have one. How many students do we have going out to other schools? Do we know?
It is a handful. I would say less than 10.
Okay. And when that happens?
In terms of School Choice?
Yes. And when that happens, we have to pay the district $5,000?
I'm sorry.
If we send a kid out somewhere for School Choice, do we then have to pay the $5,000 to the other school district?
Yes.
So if a student, we will not get the Chapter 7 funding for that student? And that money then flows to the district in which the child belongs?
What are some example districts?
Generally, what I see are people who work in other school districts. They choose to School Choice their children to those districts. So I've seen Hudson, Uxbridge. And again, I think it's staff members who are School Choosing their students.
Does North Borough or South Borough kids have School Choice?
No, they both have had their school committee meeting exam voted to withdraw.
Has the $5,000 always been consistent? Has it ever changed over time, to your knowledge?
It's been $5,000 for many years. It hasn't shifted. And I think--
At least 16.
And I think until there is, you know, an equitable amount that districts receive for accepting School Choice students, I can imagine that many districts are going to withdraw. The districts that do participate in School Choice tend to be districts that need to generate revenue. And they then become dependent on that revenue. And then it's very difficult to get out of the School Choice option.
Any other questions?
So when you talk about like how many kids of ours go to another district, is it something living in South Borough, working in another school? That's how it works?
Yeah, so they, so, and again, we can get the exact number to the committee, but it is, it would be members or citizens who have children in our towns--
Right.
--who then choice to another choice district.
So we have teachers here whose kids go to our schools.
No, she's saying that they're people who live in town--
No, I know, I know.
--happen to be teachers in the other town.
No, 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 I know that. But if teachers have their kids come to our school, are we getting the full money? Or do we just--
So that is not through choice. That is through the contract.
Through the contract.
Okay. But we do get Chapter 7?
That's my question. Do we get--
We do not.
We do not?
We do not.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there any other questions? Shall I close the public hearing?
Yes.
Shall. Hearing is closed. Okay. Now we'll go back to our regularly scheduled meeting. The first item on the agenda is audience sharing. And we have an audience member.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
My name is Karen Clark. I have two daughters in the school system, one in sixth grade and one in eighth grade.
Can you give your address, just so we know--
Oh, sure. Sixteenth Fiddleman Lane.
South Borough.
South Borough. Yes. And the reason I'm here is I wanted to bring up the topic of international travel for the high school. I know I've emailed a couple people about it, and I really just wanted to bring up the discussion. I know there used to be a robust international travel program in the past, and I haven't heard much of why it shut down, other than assuming the pandemic. But I also heard there might have been an issue, and there were things that happened. So it just shut down. I've talked to a number of different families in other school systems in terms of Ashland and West Borough and Framingham, different surrounding towns that use the EF tours for their high school, international travel for high schools. And they've spoken so highly of them. And I know that Keith just ran the Washington trip for the eighth graders, and my eighth grader, and so many of the other eighth graders had the most incredible experience and have talked about it through the whole school year. And all I could think about was, wow, wouldn't that be amazing to then bring that to some extra travel experiences in their, in the high school? I also spoke to the World Language Department head here, who also seemed to be for it, and said that she became a World Language Department head because of her experience in her own high school, traveling internationally. I know when I was in high school, I traveled internationally with my foreign language department. So I have a group of parents in South Borough that I put together who are happy to be part of some sort of subcommittee or anything we need to start the discussion, start the research, whatever needs to be done to look into making this, if it's a possibility, if people are open to it.
So the way this sort of works is that you can share your audience sharing with us, but if it's not on the agenda, we're not going to deliberate over it--
Yeah.
--or really sort of respond to it. But we appreciate your input and we can assure you that it will be on future agendas.
Perfect. So if it gets on a future agenda, do I get informed or should I just keep reading the agenda until it gets on there?
So it will initially be brought up in a policy subcommittee.
Okay.
So, and I don't know when those are scheduled for, but they're on the town website.
Perfect. All right.
Where they go on.
Ready? Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. There's no other audience sharing. Then the next item on the agenda is the action on the minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Will we accept the open meeting minutes of March 20th, 2024?
Seconded. Moved by Paul, seconded by Joan. Are there any changes, questions, comments? All right. All those in favor? That was unanimous. So that passes. Educational policy, none. New business legislative update.
So just an update at the state level on the budget process. The House Ways and Means did release its FY25 budget recommendations. So we did spend some time analyzing the House Ways and Means budget compared to the governor's budget. We did see a couple increases. One is in the universal school lunch program. There was some commentary that the governor's budget didn't fully fund it, so the House Ways and Means budget does. We also did see an increase in the per pupil amount that we'd received from $30 to $104. So that's a significant increase. And I'm not sure why it's $104.
But it's $127,000.
But it's more than 30, which is nice. And then we are also looking closely at regional transportation and circuit breakers. So we are monitoring the budget landscape closely, and it is a process, as we always share, and we'll know more in the months ahead. But the House Ways and Means budget is a step in the right direction for receiving more funding for the regional school district.
Excellent. Okay. Then the next item on the agenda is the Social Studies Department presentation.
Brittany, I'm gonna have you man the controls here, if you'd like. And I'm just gonna slide down. So can I introduce Brittany? So joining us is Brittany Burns, the Social Studies Department head, who has been to report out on some of the work of that outstanding department. Take a good wake here.
Thank you. I don't know whether to sit or stand. This is such an awkward--
I think you can sit. Let's try.
The teacher in me feels very weird about what I have to say. Well, hello, everybody. It's so nice to see all of you. I can't believe it's been two years since I was here with you last. Somehow I ended up being an April presentation. I think it was like my fifth April presentation in a row. So it's always, I think it's the fun meeting. There's cupcakes. Well, I'm so excited to share with you some of the work that we have been doing over the last two years. It has been a really exciting time in social studies. As you all know, over the last five years, we've had new frameworks, two mandates from the state, all kinds of new things. And I am so privileged to work with a team of people who just embrace these things as they come and get really excited about opportunities to do new things and to really just grow and expand our curriculum, our instruction. So I'm excited to share that with you. So I thought I'd start by just reminding you about our department members. I added two pictures because I wanted to prove that we are, in fact, professionals despite our Halloween costumes. But we have 15 full-time teachers in the Social Studies Department. And as of this moment, that is a total of 286.1 years of service to the district. That was a pretty impressive number to me. The average is about 19 years. And I think that's a testament to the dedication of this department. We have had pretty much the exact same department for the last decade. People stay. We love to work together. And so that's something that's very special to me. Oh, we offer 21 different classes this year and next year. So we have a really wide range of courses that we're offering to students. And my personal favorite thing to brag about is that we got best department in this year of senior superlatives. So I thought that was worth a shout out, for sure. But, you know, I think too, for us, as we think about our work and how it connects to the district, I think our department really finds this idea of the portrait of the graduate, and specifically the socially and civically engaged students, as really the heart of what we do. And I think you'll see that theme throughout this presentation and all of the work that we are doing. So the first thing I want to talk about is our work around the Genocide Education Bill that Massachusetts passed in 2021. We really are on kind of, I would argue, the forefront of this across the state. Much of the work that we've done in this district has been a model in other districts, which is really exciting. And our work, we've spent the last two works, last two years, rather, working on this both from the perspective of empowering learners and teaching educators. So we've done a lot of professional development together, as well as taking a really close look at our curriculum and making adjustments to that. A few highlights. We have, last year, we did internal training for all of our department members. So all 15 members have been trained in the stages of genocide and the Holocaust Memorial Museum's pedagogical approaches to teaching genocide. We also have worked over the past two years to create a vertical alignment program around the teaching of genocide and stages. And if I'm being totally honest, this is even more exciting because this year, it officially extends now six through 11. So we've worked with the middle schools to kind of build up in talking about themes of dehumanization and polarization and kind of the stages, right, that take us to acts of genocide. We've also established a genocide speaker program for our 11th grade. This will be our second year. It is going to be on Monday, May 20th, at 12:30. So you all are invited. I'll pass an invitation along to Sean that we can forward. But this has been a really exciting opportunity for us to bring in survivors of genocide to speak to our entire junior class at the culmination of their world history course. This year, we'll have actually the same speaker who came last year, Yasmina Czeczek, who is a survivor of the Bosnian genocide, to do a two-hour session with students. And that is a program that we are planning to continue in perpetuity. And then we also partnered this year with Facing History in Ourselves, doing some professional development. So we have been able to integrate a number of their new and updated resources around genocide and current events. And on March 5th, we had an entire full-day workshop with Facing History that they custom-tailored to our district, which is not something that every district gets. So that was pretty exciting, too. And to support all of this work, we have been furiously writing grants. I think one of them is up for approval tonight on the agenda, if I saw. But we had a grant for FY23 and FY24 that is closing out. And just last month, we found out that we qualified for another grant, which will be a total of $41,000 from the state. So that's pretty exciting to support that work. The next piece, as we strive to empower learners and develop students' social and civic engagement, we launched a new program this year, which Cass is a part of. I'll give you another shout out today. Cass is part of every student group we're gonna talk about tonight. But that is the National Social Studies Honor Society. We, up until this point, had not had an honor society for social studies. But we had an intrepid junior, Sophie Kopstein, who was really excited about starting this. And she worked with me and other department members to get this rolling. So we had 35 students who applied and did interviews with a group of social studies teachers. And through that process, 22 were selected. So you can see our inaugural class at their induction ceremony on March 21st, which was a great event. And the real kind of, aside from kids who just love social studies, right, the real purpose of this honor society is to encourage civic service. And so each student is required to do 10 hours of service that relates to really kind of civics, social studies, history, citizenship, things like that. So students are working hard on those hours. They hosted a night for our ninth-grade students. That was great. It was a peer tutoring night where they could come and get help on their first research paper for history class. We've had students, Cass helped organize a voter registration drive, and then a few students from the honor society helped with that. We've had students volunteer at the North Borough and South Borough elections. We have lots of really exciting things happening. And what I'm most excited about is that we are right now planning for, I think it's May 21st, we're gonna host a night for the eighth-grade students from Trotter and Melican, who will be working on their civic action projects. And they're gonna come here to the library. And our students are gonna set up different kind of stations for them so they can get help on research, they can get help on contacting stakeholders, they can get help on their presentation skills, to really try to bring the middle schoolers in and make that connection across the district. The next thing I'm excited to share about is, you know, our belief that empowering learners also means helping them make real-world connections to our curriculum and have authentic experiences. And so over the last two years, we've worked hard to bring back field trips that kind of maybe had gone away because of COVID, and also to expand some of those opportunities. Tomorrow morning, I'll be taking 50 students to Boston, to the Mocley Hoardhouse. So we've got these going. It has been a busy spring for us in terms of field trips. But you can see a list of them there. A couple of exciting highlights are, we took a group of students from the Holocaust classes to the Traveling Auschwitz exhibit in Boston. We had all of our seniors from our AP HUG class went and did a full day at the Ecotarium, where they were doing an AP review that the teachers created for them, the scavenger hunt in partnership with the Ecotarium. And we had two students participate in Student Government Day. You can see Maggie and Amelia here with Representative Donahue. So they actually got to go to the State House and be state legislators for a day. They voted on bills, they debated on things. It was at the State House. They got to sit in their seats. It was a really, really cool experience that we haven't done in a while. So that's gonna be a continuing annual experience as well that we participate in. And then we also have been, Michelle Kalin, who's our new career coordinator, I think has been kept really busy with my department because we are lining up guest speakers with her constantly. She's been a huge asset for us to find people to come and talk to, history classes, elective courses. Next week, we have a Vietnam veteran coming to speak to our US2 students. So we're really excited to be able to kind of, you know, revamp and bring back a lot of these experiences that had kind of, you know, kind of stopped for a little while. And then I think the last thing, when we were talking as a department and thinking about what was important to us, there's the big one, right, which is AI in the classroom. And this is something that, as a department, I think we've really been tackling, thinking about, talking about a lot. We've held a few after-school meetings. A couple of teachers have hosted school-wide discussion groups about this. But also, as a department, we have been experimenting with and spending some of our department meeting time, thinking about both AI from a teacher's perspective and a student's perspective, and thinking about what is this gonna look like, right, as we move forward. Especially for teachers who do a lot of work with students around writing and research, AI is something that we really cannot ignore. So, you know, I have no answers. And we just on Monday had a discussion where we all left, and we're like, I don't know. I just don't know. But we are, I think, actively kind of tackling this and thinking about it and experimenting. And then last, just kind of looking ahead for what's next for us. I'm really excited to share that next year, we have the highest-ever AP enrollment that our department has ever had. We offer five AP classes, and we're gonna have 22 sections of AP courses. Many of you know about, six years ago, we removed grade prerequisites for our AP programs, and we have seen them flourish since then, which has been really amazing. Lots of students are taking their first-ever or their only-ever AP courses. So we're really excited about that. Especially, there was a study in 2019 that shows that even taking one AP course can change or improve college outcomes for students, college attendance rates, retention, all of that. So we think it's really important that we're offering students opportunities to experience higher-level courses, critical thinking, and, you know, the structure and, in some cases, pressure that comes with an AP course, in a safe environment with teachers who are really there to support them. We also are working on universal design for learning implementation. By the fall of 2025, all 15 of our teachers will be voluntarily trained, which is really exciting. That was a program that the district has been running for two years, and we've had lots of very enthusiastic participants in that. And we have been working at our curriculum teams to redesign our core curriculum and really think about how we can make it as accessible as possible, and also integrate all of these new tools, technologies, things like that. And then we also are looking to expand our civics experiences. We have developed a partnership with Peaslee Elementary School. The fifth graders come to the high school to do, to work with our student government, or our AP government students to learn about civics. We have our honor society working on that. And we are waiting one more grant. The three wasn't enough. So we are hopefully gonna get one more. That one, we furiously submitted, right, right before April vacation. So hopefully, there'll be one more for you to vote on before the end of the year. That was a lot. Any questions, things you want to know more about?
I have one. So I think when you were discussing the genocide program, you made a comment that just struck me as interesting about how your department is identified as kind of a trendsetter, a leader, and other districts are looking to you for an example of how they should be progressing. How does that work in practice? Is it through informal relationships, or is there some fashion where there is some type of thought sharing that takes place with other districts?
Yeah, that's a great question. And the answer is kind of both, right? So a lot of it is informal connections that we have to other districts. But I also participate in a Central Massachusetts Social Studies Directors Group, kind of a Jabba-like group, where we share. So last year, I was invited to come and do some of the training at Marlborough. So we worked with Marlborough High School and middle school teachers. And then this year, I was invited to the North Hampton Regional School District. They had a big region-wide professional development around genocide education. So we did two different presentations there. And then we're still working out the details, but I think that over the summer and in the fall, we'll be consulting with a couple more school districts as well. So it's both, it's, you know, real formal partnerships and kind of informal sharing, you know, teachers emailing and sharing curriculum and things like that.
And I'm just gonna add to that, because I don't think Brittany's gonna toot her own horn, but I think a lot of this has to do with Brittany's work in this area and her sort of personal investment in it, and then relationships with Facing History in Ourselves and other organizations in the state. And so she herself has sort of, has a reputation in the state for the work that she's done in this area and brought her department, her leadership with the whole department. And so some of the people coming to her is through those relationships and sort of the reputation that she has established. So thank you to Brittany on that. And she supports our middle schools and leads a lot of the PD for our middle schools in this area and brings-- for our middle schools in this area and brings them along in the work with the high school department. So it's really been an asset to us as a K through twelve district as well.
It's not just now because two or maybe three years ago, I was driving in my car in the middle of the day and I'm listening to NPR. And all of a sudden, I hear Brittany Burns. And I pulled over and I'm texting Greg. And I'm like, Brittany Burns is on NPR. Why did you tell me?
That's never a good text to get, right?
Panic.
I have a question. I just love when you come. And I just came from an ICU and a town meeting. And your energy was really just what I needed. But I wonder about, I mean, wonder about the content. Is it more about, you know, the hierarchy within government or Robert's rules? Because that would be sexy and fun. Or is it really like how to be at town meeting and be really respectful, to really practice deep listening, to present with kindness? Even if you disagree, well, disagree, that's what it's all about. But is the flavor of it part of it too, you know? And that was just, some of that was just gutting.
No, I think that is a challenge that not just social studies teachers are facing right now. There's not a lot of models publicly or frankly, online either of how we have positive discourse, how we disagree, how we have constructive conversations. But that is something that we think about a lot in our classrooms. A few years ago, we actually did a training with Facing History specifically on that topic and how do you discuss these things. But that's a challenge that I think teachers are thinking about all the time and practicing with students. And our hope is that when we have these discussions, we're not avoiding hard topics, we're not avoiding controversial issues, right? But we're practicing, how do you, at the base level, how do you find good, valid information, right? What does that look like? That's a base-level skill that we need even before we get to the discussion piece. But also working on that and hoping that what's modeled in the classroom, what we practice in a classroom, happens in the real world. And I would say we teach, we have a lot of courses that tackle these issues. We have a criminal justice course, we have an AP, AP Government, right? We have an AP Government course that's talking about politics today, right? Things that we can't talk about at Thanksgiving, but we're doing it in a classroom. And so I just have to really commend the work of the teachers in my department, who, you know, it's a tough time in some ways to be a social studies teacher, especially there's kind of a microscope on these issues broadly. And I think they really have embraced, they're knowledgeable, they're empathetic, and really see this goal of developing students who have skills over an ideology or something like that. And I think they really work on that and focus on that. And I'm grateful to work with the team.
And that's good because parents teach siblings who are rubbing against one another how to get on. And then they come to school. And that's really what we need because the, you know, sort of the personal attacks and the pepper of it, it just doesn't help move the conversation forward. Or, I mean, we're in night three because it's been so labored. And it could be a whole lot worse guaranteed. But there are those places that I'm resting my hope in you.
And to be honest, I'll say, I think, I say it all the time, but the kids are better than us as adults. I think that.
We hold them to higher standards.
We do. And also, I think they're, they feel it acutely, right? That it's, they see it online all the time and what happens, you know, in what the adults are doing. And I think a lot of times, they learn that that's not the way to do it.
I do imagine we look rather silly sometimes.
Can I just make a comment? Since this is my last time to like see you, I just want to thank you and your department because you were, Ella graduates in two weeks. And you are such an inspiration for her to go to the political science international.
A couple of comments and a question. The first comment was on the honors society. I commend you for some of the service hours that you talked about, you know, doing things that actually had something to do with social studies. I know my kids have had some experience with some of the other honor societies where, let's say they were challenged to do that, let's say. So good job there. And also on the AP courses, it's great to see so many and so many kids taking them. And there again, my kids both took AP US History with Mr. Barry as their first AP experience. And they both found it extremely challenging, but in the end rewarded because they both said it set them up really well for all the AP courses and college courses that follow. So kudos to him and to your department on all of that. And then my question was sort of related to what we were just talking about, but I wonder how much room there is in your curriculum, given everything you have to cover to work in current events, you know, where it's relevant? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And that is something that we talk about a lot in our curriculum team meetings. I'll give you one example of how we decided to tackle that in the US History Two course, which is our sophomore course. That course starts really kind of at the turn of the century through the twenty-first century, right? Through today. And a few, about four years ago, we were having this meeting of like, we just are struggling, right, to get to the current part. So we flipped that course on its head. And we start sophomore year, our first unit is America Today. And we talk about the political spectrum, we talk about our foreign policy, we talk about our economy. And we really set kids up with language that we then circle back to, right, throughout the rest of the year. Similarly, in our World History, which is our eleventh grade required course, that course, we have redesigned over the past couple of years with the framework shift. And the civic action project, which is required by state law, were pretty unusual in that we put that in as kind of our capstone project in our last graduation requirement in our department. So students get to the end, whether they're taking AP honors or CP World History, they spend the last month of school doing a current project based on UN sustainability goals. So they choose one of the sixteen goals. They research a modern global issue. They learn about an organization or a group that's working on that issue. They have to contact them, they develop solutions, they put together a presentation and a group paper. And that was one of our ways of making sure that in the end, everything is focusing on today because that's really the most important piece. So those are kind of two specific examples. And there's a lot more in our elective courses as well. But I think that is definitely something, and to be fair, something I think we all feel like we could always do better.
Thank you.
All right, just get down the road.
I'll just say, it's just a comment, it's just so refreshing. Thank you so much. Just the energy just shines throughout your presentation and your staff. I agree with all the comments that have been said here. And one thing I just really want to comment on and I appreciate is your comments about the AP because it kind of brings me back to the comments that I made about the jumping number of students we had in our AP classes a couple months ago. And your comments were right on point about kids taking them for the first time and pushing themselves. This is something that we really want to hear and we like to hear. And then, so I really appreciate that and all your work. So thank you so much.
I would also add on to that, I didn't include it in here, but with that increase in enrollment, we have not seen a change in our scores. So our scores have continued to be far higher than state and national averages in all five of our courses. So not only are they taking it, they're also crushing it.
What percentage of freshmen go on and take their first year of AP through your programs?
That's actually a number I don't know specifically. But I will say, we are the only department that offers an AP course in tenth grade. So that's the absolute first opportunity that students have. And next year, we have fifty-six freshmen, this year's freshmen, who are going to be taking that course. But beyond that, I don't really know because junior year, a lot of APs open up. But we'd have to look into that. But I'm sure we could get that data. I could talk to Lisa about that.
Yeah. The reason why I bring it up is because I think the guidance department did a really good job of communicating with all of the classes for freshmen. From what I understand, I kind of polled not only my daughter, but everyone, sort of insinuating that it's a lot of work. And so it's kind of interesting. So I'm just curious to see what sort of response you've got. It's fifty-six. I didn't know if that's a lot or a little.
Fifty percent.
Yeah, I mean, that's a pretty high percentage for sophomores. I think, and of course, that increases, right, junior year and then of course.
I don't know. So does it?
Yeah, it does.
The other, so I too share the sentiment that you bring a ton of energy. I think this may be my first opportunity to see you. History was my first love in high school. So I definitely, Mr. Powers was my guy. But a question I have for you, I noticed that you send the school to Peaslee. You may not have seen that, this is kind of one of my things that I always ask. Do you have an opportunity to go to the Southborough Schools? Because I think we should probably just always, I always try to push the departments because I recognize that it's closer and it's much more convenient for the high school students to go and just pop over to a local Northborough school. But I think it's really important that we consider the Southborough Schools.
Yeah, and that's a really good point that you made. And one of the things that I think we're really hoping to do with this civics grant, so part of the partnership with Peaslee is quite literally that the students can walk. It was a really great day that the AP Government students hosted sessions and the fifth graders walked from Peaslee. They had a police escort, you know, over to the school. It was great. But we didn't really have a lot of funding for transportation. So part of what we put into this grant was the idea for transportation funding so that we could possibly bring fifth graders from other schools and from Southborough over. And long-term, you know, I think we're going to build on this program and, you know, beyond the grant, we'll have to make funding plans and things like that for that. But that is definitely something we're thinking about. And part of why we were structuring this eighth grade night to partner with both Trotter and Melican at the same time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Brittany.
All right.
Ooh, town meeting recap. Hot off the presses.
I would try to present the town meeting recap with the same energy with her report. So the great news, the Northborough Town Meeting on Monday evening did pass the regional budget. So that closes out the fiscal year twenty-five budget process and places the district in a great position to launch the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Just want to thank Becky and the financial team for all its hard work. Also, the high school leadership team for its budgeting process and really thinking about what do we want to accomplish in twenty-four, twenty-five? And how can we really improve the student experience? So it's, I think, an important milestone. And also, thank you to the committee for aiding and assisting the budget process this year. Good news on the budget front. Also, we do have the assessment for capital projects. So this is the first year that, or next year will be the first year we're moving the consistent investment of approximately four hundred thousand dollars for capital projects. So that is something that we did communicate to both communities that is something they can expect to move forward.
Sitting on this side and then, you know, as a town member, there was no opposition to the bills for anybody who wasn't there. There was good support. And I think that your capacity to communicate and then you coming in with easy answers is always just moves things along. And I think your preparedness was extraordinary and had very much to do with the fact that it eased it through the vote. And Joan, I know you were there and Karen, and maybe you felt the same. But I think that your hard work really paid off and it just made it easier for the town to hear what they needed to hear and make their decisions. So congratulations in that regard.
Joan?
Yeah, I will back up and second what Kathleen said. Because I think that, you know, the questions that were posed from the town and you had all the facts there and even some of the questions were, you know, Becky, you came in with the facts and figures to show them. And it was like, no one had a follow-up because you answered the question. And you didn't say, well, I'll get it to you in two days or tomorrow, I'll give you the answer. And Greg, your presentation was just so professional. And it was good to see the way the capital projects were and the town accepted your presentation and how to do it this way, in a different way. So it's always nice to say, we always look for kids in education and curriculum to make changes and to go forward and get better. And you guys are definitely doing that. And that was the success, as Kathleen said. And Karen was there, Sean was there. And even Chris was there in support of the budgets and of all the articles that we had even for the K-Day. So thank you very much to your administrative staff. It's almost probably like doing a term paper. You're over, you got an A-plus, now you can have your summers. Thank you very much.
Now the real work begins.
Yes.
I'm glad to hear Northborough went so well because I didn't think Southborough was so great. Because, I mean, it was great they passed the budget, but I was really disappointed in the capital stabilization fund, which got shot down again. So you had just mentioned something about, I mean, how are we going to deal with that? I guess is the question.
Given it a lot of thought. And I think of a select board member, Sam Stivers, who didn't give up. He kept running for reelection until he was elected. And I do think that my recommendation to the committees, we're not going to give up. You know, I think they did vote that, asked about Technical High School Stabilization Fund in Northborough and Southborough. And I, with the school committee's approval, plan on bringing it forward again next year and doing more work, more pre-work with the community of Southborough of why, why this is so important.
But didn't you just say something about putting four hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, so the four hundred thousand dollars was the assessment that we added to the overall budget. So we, instead of asking for separate articles in the town meeting floor, we assessed four hundred thousand to each of the communities and apportioned it based on the regional agreement so that we can move some of those capital projects forward. And I think it's a two-pronged approach. It's that approach and having stabilization fund. It's a combination of the two.
Okay. I just had a really bad feeling coming out of that meeting. And it, you know, it irked me because we bent over backwards for years trying to meet the guidelines that Southborough puts out. And, you know, we want a percentage increase between this and that this year. And we, you know, you and your previous administrators have done a great job doing that. And what I heard was, you know, if you want something, come ask for it. You know, we're not going to give you the stabilization fund because we don't trust you to put money into that and, you know, and just manage it for however long it's going to be there. And, you know, so I'm like, okay, so let's just ask for whatever we want. Sean, you got something you want? We'll put it in there and we'll take it to the floor of town meeting and let them shoot it down. That's how I feel at this point.
Yeah, can I just make a comment too? That if you look at the historical budget increases at the regional level, they've been modest.
Yes.
We have not pushed the envelope. And therefore, the reason why the budget's passed is because we submit, you know, fiscally responsible and educationally sound budgets that are very reasonable. And I agree what the message we received from some citizens was, if you need it, ask for it. There's never anything that we've not supported.
So we will. But also, there was progress made even on town meeting floor. I mean, we were changing, we being schools, were changing minds about, you know, for, from members of the select board, maybe not so much advisory, but there was progress even during town meetings. So I'm hopeful that there will be even more progress between last town meeting and next.
I guess it was advisory that bothered me most because, I mean, I thought it was advisory that asked us to put a policy together, which we did. So what's the holdup now? You know, it's like they're moving the goalposts or something. I really didn't understand it.
Sounds like you're going to be chair of a subcommittee. The guests should be in advisory before next town meeting.
But that is, at the town meeting in Southborough, if you can sell it to both, then that sells the town. But if either one of them says nay, that's when it doesn't. But if you can sell them both and then you go to the citizens, then it passes.
Right.
But Greg, at the pre-meeting that we presented to the town, they were against it then.
They were, and I think they were.
But I guess I don't get why because, other than the John Butler argument.
Oh, you're exactly right. They basically said at the pre-meeting, you don't, you don't need your own money. Just come ask us.
And so we thought we'd bring it to the town. And like I said, next year, hopefully a new cast of characters. Cass, any questions? a new cast of characters. Cassidy, any questions?
Yeah, I was curious. I know that it was brought in the meeting about if you use for emergency purposes. I didn't see the emergency wording anywhere in the bill or in the pieces that we referenced. So I was just curious on your perception of if adding that clarification in it directly would have, because I felt like it might have swayed Southborough's opinion beforehand, and then potentially advisories as well. And maybe that would happen soon. I'm not sure what your perception of that was.
I think that what we presented was master general law. So we could have, I think, you know, in hindsight, there's always more work to be done around educating people around the why. I think, you know, we did meet with advisory and the select board to share the why. So I'm not sure possibly, Cass, that could have helped. I think it did, you know, the presentation did change the select board's vote. But I'm not sure.
Stay tuned. Any other comments at the town meeting? Okay. Then the next item on the agenda is school choice vote. We've had our hearing. I think that we all asked our questions. Do you want your motion?
That we vote to opt out of school choice for this coming school year?
Second. Give it to Karen. Moved by Paul, seconded by Benny, seconded by Karen. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? No. Okay, that passes unanimously. So you may file paperwork if you need to.
Perfect.
Okay, Student Opportunity Act Plan.
So in your packet, I included the Student Opportunity Act Plan. As part of the federal Student Opportunity Act, was really looking to change the way education was funding in many districts. It also required districts to submit a three-year evidence-based plan to close achievement gaps among student subgroups. I will share that the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District did not see a significant increase in Chapter 70 funding as a result of this act. However, we are still required to submit a plan and really identify a subgroup to close the achievement gap. We did choose students with disabilities. And that is, will be our focus for the next three years, as it has been in prior years. And we'll be using state benchmarks that have been set to monitor our progress. And this will require an annual update to the school committee on how we're doing. But I also just want to make it clear that it's not that we're receiving an additional $500,000 or $1 million, as some districts are. Our increase in Chapter 70 funding as a result of the Student Opportunity Act was $74,000. Very minimal.
But still appreciated.
Still helpful. It's, so it's a...
Some grants are given over time, some are...
So it was a four-year implementation. We are entering into year three, I believe. But it's been, if you look at Chapter 70 funding, it's been very stagnant in terms of increases.
Okay. All right. Then moving on. Review of... Oh, will you vote to accept it? Yes. Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept?
I vote to accept the Student Opportunity Act Plan.
Moved by Sean, seconded by John. Any other questions? All those in favor? Okay, that passes unanimously. All right, now you can fill all that paperwork out, too. Review of the 2024-2025 Student Handbook Updates.
So this evening, we have Assistant Principal Andy McGowan, who is our handbook expert and takes his tests on annually. So he'll be sharing some of the key changes for the upcoming school year.
Good evening. So, yeah, in your packet, just to highlight, kind of the bigger ones, there was a lot of clerical updates with like names and dates and that kind of thing. But our health services departments, Mary Ellen Duggan and our nurses, went through and updated their whole section to, and I believe they did it district-wide, to kind of update it with practice, but also with some links throughout the document, throughout the handbook now, for certain medical conditions and color-coded certain things, so that parents, when looking at it, can know, like, when their child should stay home and that kind of thing. So they, they really kind of gave that a nice facelift to make it more user-friendly from the parent's side as they look at it. And the other big adjustment or update that we did was we updated our student dress and personal appearance section, which, you know, your packets get into a little bit more detail with this. But the former language was kind of centered around business casual dress and appearance at school, and got into a little bit more of the weeds than I think what we needed. And working with our legal counsel, we went to align it with the Northborough Regional Policy on Dress and Appearance. And so now aligns with that. It also is, represents the law and our just actual practice here at the building a bit better. So that was the other big update to that. And then working with our legal counsel, too, we added kind of an introduction paragraph to our discipline section, which wasn't there before. And now it just kind of gives a quick overview of certain components of the law, and before you get into that section. So this was done with a lot of help from the admin team here at the building, but also from legal counsel and looking at other handbooks in the area of schools that have some of the stuff that we're looking at this year. So those are the updates.
So when do you, sorry, I just jumped into my own question. When do you switch over from like the old version to the new version? Or is it a...
So the current handbook will be posted on the website through pretty much August. And then July, August is when we will post the new handbook for 2024-25.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
I do.
Yeah, John?
How much time do you spend updating this?
It varies year to year. I mentioned, last year, we've gone through what was once an 80-something page document, and have really kind of made it more succinct to a 60-page document, which we've taken out. I think it was a little bloated on some parts, and we've taken out some of the language that just really didn't need to be there. And narrowed it down to the essentials of, you know, what parents need to know, what students need to know, and what we really operate by in like, in real-time practice.
Yeah, I've read it. It's pretty good.
Yeah.
So, well done. I just was curious how much time you spent. Like, I didn't know if it was like 100 hours a year. Like, I'm just curious.
It's an ongoing thing.
What's the overhead? Because it's, I mean, even putting the links in from, you know, it's just a lot of work.
Yeah.
So, good job.
No, thank you.
It's a Herculean task.
How did you get that job?
It's all right. It was a committee, we had a committee.
I don't know if I get it right or wrong, but...
You picked this the shortest route.
I mean, it is such an important job. You know, I think you spent, in terms of the time, it does take a significant, significant amount of time. And it's, it's over the course of the year. So as things come up, and, you know, the handbook is in practice, changes come up, and so it's a running record.
And it's truly a team effort. Like, people are, we have a working document for each year that our admin team puts comments in throughout the year, and our counseling staff and department chairs connects us to. So like, it's really a work in progress as each year goes on.
And I will just add, Mr. McGowan does an excellent job on a very unglamorous task like this. And there are many other things that he does that are similarly just quietly done with a very high level of attention to detail and high quality, like running MCAS and managing all the room usage around the building. And they're not the most exciting projects, and he does them extraordinarily well. And we're very lucky for his work on those projects. And he's being humble by distributing some of the credit for the work, because it was many, many hours' worth of work. He did much of it honestly.
I believe it.
Okay. Well, you're off the hook. You may leave.
We won't make you change it again.
All right. So we got to vote the handbook. You can't leave yet, because we have a vote, Benny.
I'd like to move to...
Thank you.
I'd like to move to approve the 2025 handbook.
2024-2025 handbook. Okay. Moved by John, seconded by Paul. Any other questions? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Okay.
Congratulations.
Okay. Now, moving on to approval of grants and donations.
So we have...
A lot.
Several to approve. And I think Brittany Barnes did speak to a few of them.
Yes.
Becky, do you want to run through all the grants?
Sure.
I can speak to the first one if you want. So the Genocide Education Grant, Brittany spoke to, but this is our third year of that grant, and will help fund some of the things she spoke of, like the guest speakers. But also, the point I wanted to, the thing that I wanted to point out is it will also provide professional development for all members of the faculty at Algonquin in the coming year. That will be like a Level Two follow-up to work that we did in 2020 around equity and inclusivity, and specifically about leading difficult conversations in, that often come up, whether it's in formal classes or just in the, you know, day-to-day existence in the school. So we'll be working on figuring out exactly when that happens. But this grant will be funding that ongoing work.
Yeah, describe each one briefly.
So maybe we'll have Sean talk about the State Street grant, since you've been...
Sure, yeah. We're very excited about this. And many thanks to John for bringing this to our school. State Street is offering a grant of $10,000, and then two other grants for a total of $1,000, for a grand total of $11,000, to be used to improve and renovate our fitness center. So that's something that John and I have been talking about all year. And it's, and with hard work from Becky, has come to fruition. And we are working with a company to bring on board some new equipment and to retire some old equipment with that money for a grant total of about $11,000. Additionally, we have some smaller grant amounts, or smaller donation amounts. One from the Northborough Garden Club you see there, for $200 for the courtyard birdhouse project. $200 from the Southborough, the Sustainable Northborough, and the Rotary for $300 for the same project, the Enviro Projects Club's endeavor to bring composting to our school. So again, Becky's worked hard with us and their students to make that a reality. And that's very exciting. Wegmans has donated $500 to be used by DECA. And the VFW Auxiliary 1628 has donated 15, uh, sorry, $50 to be used by Youth Unified Singing
Okay. All right. So do I hear a motion to approve the FY 2425 FC 215A Genocide Education Grant in the amount of $16,500, and approve the grant from the State Street Foundation in the amount of $10,000, plus two $500 donations to supplement the grant for the improvement of the ARHS Fitness Center, and to approve, the approval of the grant from the Northborough Garden Club to the ARHS Garden Club in the amount of $200 for the Courtyard Garden Birdhouse Project, which sounds so cute. And approval of donations from Sustainable Northborough in the amount of $200, and the Rotary Club of Northborough in the amount of $300, to the ARHS Enviro Projects Club to fund the Black Earth Composting Pilot, also love that. And approval of the donation from Wegmans Food Markets, Inc. in the amount of $500 to Algonquin DECA, and the approval of donation from the VFW Auxiliary 1628 in the amount of $50 to the ARHS Unified Singing Club. So moved? Moved by Joan, seconded by...
Second.
Kathleen. Any questions? Joan?
Not question, but a comment. John, thank you very much. I mean, when the APTO does that, or we get grants from the NEF, we always thank them. So I'm sure this is from the organization, the business that you work with? State Street?
It's, it's an offering that I have as an employee of State Street.
Okay. So thank you very much, because that takes a lot of initiative, besides the wonderful work you do during the day, and making the contact with administration, Greg, and also with Sean, and working to see where that money would be most beneficial. We just came out of town meeting. We said that our budget's passed, but anything that the funding we do does. So thank you very much for your initiative and going that extra step. Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor? All those grants are approved unanimously. And on to the superintendent's report to the committee, principal's report.
And I will turn it over to Principal Bevan.
And I will turn it over to Cass.
So first, I had a recognition for the Harbinger. Along with winning the CSPA Crown, Cold Crown Membership, they also won the NSPA Leadership Award for 13 of their members, which is for outstanding achievements in student leadership. And they also have 65 student staff members, which are these writers, editors, and photojournalists. And it is a big club at Algonquin. And you think of the fact that most clubs are closer to 20 or 30 members, and these members are all dedicated. They put in about 20 hours a week. And it is a significant amount of work for each of them. And the Harbinger's really just such a great group. For some old news updates, it is some things that we've discussed before. But the Algonquin Got Talent performed. This is a picture of one of the winners in the group up top. And they, him and three friends, performed a song and dance for the recognition of Lunar New Year, and they won. And to the side, we have MICA, those students performed. And they are, they're such a good group. They performed a, oh my gosh, the multicultural festival. And they are very high achieving in music. A lot of them are members of the Music Honor Society. And in that picture, you can see the three middle are some of the leadership members for next year as well. On the bottom left is the career exposition that Mr. Bevan and I were involved in. Mr. Bevan is center in that picture there. And it was really such a great opportunity for me and all the brothers and sisters that attended. And all of what was put in is really appreciated. So thank you so much for that. The culture festival was great. Rhea Mahanta is pictured in the center for that one. And she, of course, was here for the Harbinger earlier tonight, because she also performs with a group of her friends. And they are really just so, so amazing. For anyone that learned, I'm sure that they saw the performances and how great and dedicated the students are. For students, for recognition of World Down Syndrome Day, students and teachers alike wore mismatched socks as well, as a celebration for that. For other school-wide celebrations, the best buddies held their friendship ball again in the cafeteria. It's always such a success and so much fun. And they have so many activities going on during it, including photo booths, a DJ, snack and food tables, and quiet rooms as well for all students to enjoy. For members of the Asia Club, students drew with chalk outside the entrances of the school for a holly celebration. The National Honor Society held an Easter egg hunt in the community. There was the LGBTQ Day of Silence, where participating members did not speak for an entire school day. And there was also, on the left, the Wellness Day. So the library held some events, including having Parker, the library dog, come back, which is always a good experience for students. And you can see Mr. Bevan facing off against the student championship in the gym here for the rock, paper, scissors tournament at the schools all through the school day.
Who won? Who won that one?
I did.
Yes, and he's very proud of it.
Do we need a trophy case for that?
That was a very fun day. School-wide rock, paper, scissors.
So each student, and some teachers as well, came to the school and received at the entrances, a necklace, string of beads. And throughout the day, they could play other people in rock, paper, scissors. And the winners would get all of the beads from their opponents. So throughout the day, those that qualified with 30 necklaces went to the main office to turn those in, and receive a token. At the end of the day, we had a short assembly for all of those students to face off against each other. But it was a lot of fun for the Wellness Day. And then earbreak break. There's also the National Social Studies Honor Society induction, as Ms. Burns said earlier. And a career talk as well. Students were able to engage with childhood development classes about careers in teaching in physical therapy with community members. NEHS, the National English Honor Society, visited Peaslee to read books. It's been an ongoing program, but expanded this month with, I believe, 30 days of student reading. So a few times a week, I think it was three or four times a week, students would go down to the Peaslee School right after school and read to children. to the Peaslee School right after school and read to children. Just such a fun experience. Spring sports, there's a lot of updates, but today was the National Recognition Day for all student athletes that are sounding like a college level. There have been wins this month from track, rugby, softball, baseball, lacrosse, basketball, tennis, and boys volleyball team. So if you'd like some updates on that, the Algonquin Titans Instagram is up and running. It's always keeping people updated with these sports wins. Rhea is also pictured in the center here again for the Scholars Luncheon where students, two students from Algonquin, Rhea Mahanta and Matthew Creris, were recognized in Worcester at Holy Cross for just being excellent scholars. And there are students from about 10 schools in
Central Mass districts.
All Central Mass. So, but these two won and such an amazing achievement for them. For student events, we had students watching eclipse at school, including during track practices, as you can see here in the middle. And some teachers even were giving out glasses to their students to make sure they performed safely in that. The Model UN Team had a competition a few weekends ago. I heard it went fairly well. Student government students had a field trip, the State House, as Ms. Burns presented it well, and the APHOG students at the EK Terrarium. There was a second exposition for students for construction and trades and students had partake in the Youth Connections Metro West group for construction and trades exposition. In this photo here on the bottom right, you can see a student is learning how to use construction equipment through a simulation device. And so that's a highly emerging form of training currently. Students got to experience that firsthand. And there was a luncheon learn where students got to meet with local community members who participate in the arts field to learn about careers in the arts that they could potentially explore. Looking ahead, the Harbinger is beginning to create their senior issue, which is the final issue again for the senior students and it includes many of the senior students' articles, their final pieces of advice typically for younger students. It also sums up every year, including some aspects of the yearbook and superlatives and a lot of studies that we go out. Senior Assassin started today, which is just a fun water game, water gun game that students like to play. So
Do you need an escort out tonight?
What?
Do you need an escort to your car?
They cannot do anything on school property. So I'm actually safe, so. They also held the improv show auditions right before break and that group has now been announced this week. So they're looking forward to performing next year. It was also Stress Awareness Month and so there was some work done, including with the Metro West Health Survey results coming in. So across administration and school, there have been posters I've seen, there's been discussions of the Mental Health Advocacy Club, as well as behind the scenes work in looking at the Metro West Health Survey results and the first batch of summary data from that. And things that are coming that are very fun for students are the soccer tournament, which will have students at Algonquin who will be coaching, reffing, and supporting an event where young members of the community can come and play soccer against each other for prizes. And the carnival, which always goes well, but this year we will be adding a powder pop, which is the girls' flag football game that often goes into events. It's juniors versus seniors. So it's going to be a very fun event and I'm looking forward to it. So for other student advisory committee work, along with meeting part of the district calendar working group, we have also been working on the compost bins, which are at the school, have been starting to be introduced. And there's this current list for scheduling of students who are monitoring the bins to make sure that they are all taken care of properly and engaged successfully with, basically. So that will be beginning later this month or next month. The NARCAN training work, I've been working with Mary Ellen Duggan as well as the National Student Advisory Committee, both Mr. Mosserino and Ms. Arvinidjian, who is a health teacher here. For civic engagement, we've been working with the town meetings, as well as having students help debate between campus or public office in some settings at school. And for Algonquin students, four students volunteered to assist with town meeting and the technology to build the software of town meeting as well. There have been work done with the eighth grade history departments for working with middle school eighth grade transitions into student government and high school with a civic slums. Finalizing the 2023 to 2024 goals for students here in front of the advisory committee, and we are hoping to help with a mental health presentation next month with Dr. Luthen. So thank you.
Thank you.
Scotty, yeah?
Yes. It's only one month.
With a week off.
With a week off.
Wow.
Who's, who's filling your seat?
Elections have not happened yet. I would guess Amalia Sinclair. I'm not sure if you know her, but she has stepped in a couple meetings in the past few years for Ben and Mark.
But there's elections.
So our election takes place where the student advisory committee members are elected and then they have an internal vote. So my guess is that if she is re-elected, she would win that internal vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, welcome.
So good evening, everyone. I'm gonna give a brief update on a few really key areas. So I think everyone is aware that our wonderful Assistant Principal Kathy Cormagnani is, has been offered and accepted a job in central office, working as the Director of Instructional and Technology and Science. So losing her gives us, you know, we're sad to see her go and happy to continue to work with her. And now we are in, hard at work already on the process of hiring her replacement. So just tonight, you'll see it there, we had our first candidate interviews. We did a resume screening already. Candidate interviews began tonight. We have more tomorrow. And then we have school visits by our semifinalist candidates coming up next week. That's Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And then we'll start looking at the feedback and be doing, we'll be doing the reference checking to identify the person who will be the next instructional leader here in our building. It's very exciting. And so that work began tonight. I have a wonderful committee of several students, several parents, several staff members, Detective Sullivan, who's our school resource officer. It's a wide-ranging stakeholder group and we're excited to see where it takes us. Just to give you an idea of what, so I have, I'm sorry, the composition of the hiring committee is right there. That's what I just explained. And then just to give you a sense for what it looks like when we have an individual who we're looking to hire on Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, when each of our three semifinalists comes in, each for one day, that's a sample of what we ask them to do while they're here. And so the goal is to have them interact with as many and as authentically with the people around our building and in our community to give a sense for what their strengths are, what their areas of weakness might be, to make sure they're a compatible fit. So they will do classroom visits with me. We'll talk about, you know, what kind of instruction they saw and what kind of feedback they'd provide to the teacher. We have a committee of students who will be meeting with them. I'll provide them a work task that's pretty authentic to the kind of work that they'd be doing. They'll have to sit and do that work and then provide it to me at the end. They'll meet with staff and kind of a drop-in lunch experience. They'll meet with the department head group for an interview and then they'll interview with me after that. It's a very long day. I will also say it's probably pretty accurate to the kind of switching and cognitive load management that the assistant principal does on the regular. And it usually really tells us exactly who is the best candidate for this work. So we're very excited about that. And that will be wrapped up probably by the next time we meet. That's the goal. And I'll be reporting out on that or you'll know. Superintendent Martino will be part of that communication. Just a few updates on our strategic planning. Well, it's not planning anymore. This is the school improvement planning as we are reflecting on with the remaining weeks of the year. Just wanted to kind of let you know how we've done so far in our big overarching goals. These, of course, are very big and ambitious goals that are not truly one-year goals. They're usually a portion of a much longer, several-year initiative. So I'm going to highlight the real three big areas that we worked most on this year. One is, I don't know, boy, that was a very odd, so we are working very closely on student engagement. I've talked a lot about this this year. And just in the week before the break, we conducted student focus groups. So what that looked like, and it's been in your packet, seven groups of students were convened by 16 staff members. 14, 13 of the staff members were department heads and three were teachers who volunteered. And they simply did exactly what it sounds like. They met with students in these small group settings with prescribed questions to ask them about what keeps them engaged at school, what motivates them at school, what kind of assignments and school experiences do they get the most excited about, what kind of school experiences do they not get the most excited about, and how can we learn from students about what they're experiencing, what's working for them here at Algonquin Regional High School? So we can do more of that and what's not working for them and so we can do less of that. And so the data is now, so some of the questions that are included that we asked were things like these two here. What factors or conditions in a classroom make you more or less engaged? What makes you more invested in a project or assignment? And then there were also follow-up questions and a much more, this sounds very stilted, but it was a very organic conversation from there. And now the work is, has begun to, sorry, to unpack that data. And so to build on what Ms. Burns said earlier, we are actually using AI to help us with this task. So all these conversations were recorded. AI helped us create a transcript for each and then we used an AI tool to unpack that, those reams of data. They were seven to 17 pages, single-spaced of conversation. And now we have AI helping us to make sense of that and to identify themes. Before we do anything with that, we are using our, the department heads are checking to see, there's kind of a quality control step that we're using to make sure that the conclusions AI is helping us to arrive at are actually accurate to the conversations we've had. The next step from there will be on May 6th, we have a staff meeting and we are going to provide the staff with some of those high-level conclusions about what, what student engagement factors we want to really think more about going into next year and build upon. And we're probably going to rely, if I had to anticipate, we're going to rely heavily on the actual words of students to just convey that message. So not only is it important to convey the themes, but also to pull out the actual word-for-word articulation of students about what they get excited about, about their learning here at school. Additionally, and Cass had touched, touched on this, we had the Career Expo with which Michelle Kaelin had helped me to really bring into the finish. I don't think it's, it's boastful to say that we were really the school leader among the other five schools that, that really spearheaded and organized this work. So along with the other five schools, which were, I might miss some, so I won't name them all, we worked with the Marlboro Regional Chamber of Commerce to develop a, kind of a Carol Sales-style experience. It was hosted at the Solomon Pond Mall in March and each of our students, we had 28 students attend this year, were able to spend 25 minutes, 20 to 25 minutes with individuals in each of these industry areas to learn about what they liked about that work, why they got into it, what level of education did they have, what kind of student were they when they were in high school, what kind of benefits exist in these areas. And so there on the bottom right, you see one of our students talking to one of our industry reps. They're right there in the food court at the Solomon Pond Mall. So many thanks to Michelle Kaelin for her hard work and to the Solomon Pond Mall for donating the space and her industry reps. So this is the second year we did this event. Last year we had about 120 people, 20 students, 120 students participate. We only had four from our school. This year we had 175 total students, including 25 to 28 students. I can't remember how many ended up on the bus over there. So this, this event is growing in size and impact and we're really excited about it. I'm sorry, did I tell that one? And additionally, and so that's a photograph from that same event, but I'm using this as an opportunity to also highlight this, the other work that's happening in the realm of career development and exploration, mostly by Michelle Kaelin, who's our career exploration and innovation leader. She is planning summer internships as a pilot this year where students could be working in placements that she's developing now. Additionally, we are looking at having a small group of fall and a different group of spring internships to, to be the first year we've done that work. Simultaneously, she's working closely with our guidance department to plan our winter workshops, to do a career interest inventory that would inform the work that she would plan for job shadowing in the spring. So the real goal is to, to use sophomore year as an opportunity to have students really start to contemplate the careers that might, they might get excited about. What Michelle is starting to conclude is when you're doing that in spring of junior year or in senior year, it's not too late, but it's really work that's better, better done when students are really thinking about that. In sophomore year, so they, we can start to place internships in junior based on some of the internship, the interest inventory work and job shadowing that happens in sophomore year. So that is the second large bucket. So that was student engagement and then career development and exploration. Those are our two big ones. And then I've talked a lot about attendance, but we are continuing to look closely at it, just as all the schools in the state have. I've shared our data in the past. So pre-pandemic, we were a pretty typical rate of the percentage of students who were chronically absent from school was 13%. Chronic absenteeism is defined as any student who misses 10% or more of the school days of the school year. So in 180-day school year, that's 18 days or more, so 13%. And in 2018, 19, we're missing that amount of school and that number shot way up as it did in every community. And as it has in every community, it's coming down over time, but not as fast as us educators would like. Currently, our rate is at 15%, so it is dropping. We're working very hard to, to bring that number down. And we have some data I'll share in a second that suggests that this senior class is probably the most, having the most difficulty related to attendance, which makes sense because they are the ones who were most impacted by the pandemic. We are addressing some grade-specific trends that I'll show you in a moment. One of the things we're trying this year is to have a summer pilot program to keep a very small number of our most attendance challenged students to maintain contact here at school. So we're, we're running a program over the summer that will allow for some credit recovery. And this is a grant-funded program. And also to make sure that those students develop and maintain a good relationship with some of our adults. Some of these students are the ones who need the most TLC to make sure that they're getting excited about school and that they come back to school in September after that layoff. So shout out to Kate Clark for her hard work to, to develop this summer pilot program. We have two teachers lined up for that and a counselor. So to just give you an idea, sorry, the way this slide shows up, of our students who comprise that 15%, I just showed you a moment ago, that's 180 students. I'm just showing you the raw number of students who comprise that 15%. It's 180 students total. 90 of them are seniors that are currently chronically absent. But what you see is the silver lining is that our students in the grades behind them, especially our juniors, are maintaining, you know, generally a quite good level of daily attendance. Now, that may change when seniors suddenly flip over into becoming seniors. That is, this would not be the first time that happens. However, our data, our internal metrics seem to suggest that our juniors actually just have some, you know, they're not quite as impacted, I think, by the pandemic in the way that it's impacting attendance around the nation and around the Commonwealth and certainly here at the school. So that, sorry, these are the same bullets. So that's the number I talked about, that 15% converts into 180 students and then you see the breakdown there. Any questions? Yes?
I have a question about the summer pilot program. Just a little more detail, like on the credit recovery, how many credits would the students be able to take? How many, I know you may, it's too early, you may not know, approximately how many students are you going to open this up to? And is it going to be for the whole entire summer?
There's several questions, so I'm going to do my best to remember all the questions and answer them. But the, the program is for four weeks. It's not for the whole summer and it will be for, we're thinking eight to 10 students. And these are the students who have had the greatest amount of challenge this year. And so for those students, it would be open to, I think, just about any student, but there are not that many students who need credit recovery or need to rectify really troubling attendance trends. So we are going to So we are going to use our data team here at school that meets weekly. It's called Student Assistance Team. And we will identify the students who we're going to approach to come into this program. For a student who might not be finding a great deal of success and who might be having trouble attending, the idea of coming to school in the middle of the summer is going to be a bit of a challenge for us to incentivize them to do that. So it's incumbent upon us to make that program really exciting. So Kate Clark and I are working on this. And this is why it's a pilot. We're going to try our best to curb some of those trends on the students who need it the most.
So how many credits would, would be optimal?
You know, I don't know. I don't know that we have an answer to that. I think it'll just depend on, I think, not every student, it might be that not every student needs a great deal of credit recovery. I think it'll be a really curated and cultivated experience for the eight to ten kids who are going to be, you know, working with two to three adults. It'll be a very, I think, labor intensive, a lot of attention provided to those students. So I don't know, I actually know how many credits we would be able to provide. I'm sorry, I can try and find that out.
So I hate to use the word basic, but in the curriculum areas, would it be just the basic areas of research studies, science, math, English?
Sometimes I can only just speak to when we don't have staffing that can teach, let's say, several areas simultaneously, which is really would be unusual to do. We can sometimes have those staff members use their time and expertise as educators to help steer the students through an online program that we arrange and do a little bit of like coaching and a little bit of executive functioning management and a little bit of like, you know, inspiration and encouragement to make sure that the students do that work. So I would suspect that for each student, we'll come up with a prioritization of maybe one class or two classes they need to catch up on and make up some room on. And we would prioritize those classes that are graduation requirements. So for example, English is a four year graduation requirement. So any student who fails an English class is already on track to not graduate on time and will have to double up on English in some year before they graduate. This would be an opportunity for them to catch up. So I would say English would be a high priority.
Well, congratulations on this program and I hope that you can build on this success and maybe next year have more faculty or, you know, do another session, two sessions instead of one. But thank you very much because it's easier and it's hard, easier at the same time difficult to grab these students now rather than let them go through and then they regret in future years, we should have done, they should have done something. We're providing the opportunity for them. So thank you very much for reaching out to those kids.
Yeah, thank you. And credit much, and the credit goes to Kate Clark, who's our assistant director of student support services for coming up with this idea and really building out the model.
Please give her a congratulations.
I would ask, when they are asked, why don't you come to school? Is it because I don't care? Or is it because I just am so anxious or made so many skips in learning during COVID? Just couldn't manage online or whatever that they, are they giving up? Are they college bound? Are, you know, like, can you give us some?
So I think there's probably no singular answer to that, as you might imagine, but I do think we are a very high expectations community and students put a huge amount of effort into their schooling. And junior year is probably the very peak of that effort. And we do hear from students that junior year is really a challenge and they get into college and then the, some of the real students kind of take their foot off the gas there. So that's, I think, I mean, I'm literally kind of describing senioritis as we've all. I don't want to over explain it, but I think that's what we hear.
April seems rather early for that.
That comports with the data that we're seeing. And we have not, when I got here, we had very few good systems for capturing attendance data. We had very poor systems for that. We instituted that when these students became juniors. So they're only here for two years when we have really good data gathering systems for attendance. And I fear that to some degree, some of those patterns and the early indications of those patterns started to emerge then. The juniors, not as much. They were freshmen when that happened, or they were sophomores when that happened, on and on. So the firmer and better our systems have been, I think they'll work better for the students who are in there for all four years.
I agree with Joan. It's a great program to be proactive and it's not just aspirational, but thank you for putting it together.
Oh, you're welcome. We're excited about it.
So are you working with families with this too? Like, so say you have, you say ninety kids are seniors. So if they're supposed to be graduating in June and they're on this list, have you had that conversation with them yet?
Many conversations, yes, yes. There's, I would say, a fair amount of calculating and students who know which classes they are heading and which classes they can absorb some absences. And students are making some, I think, calculated choices about that. And of those ninety students, those are not students who are, many, many of them are not in any danger of not graduating on time. And any student who is, which is data we look at all the time. Seniors in danger of not graduating is something we revisit. We look at lists literally every week and maybe even more than once per week as we get closer to graduation. So that number ninety is a very high number. Doesn't mean that all ninety students are in trouble for graduating. It might be a student who's at eighty eight percent attendance and carrying Bs or maybe even As in many classes.
So the other kids, like that are freshmen, sophomores and juniors, is there contact with their families with the absences that they continue to have?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. I think the world is aware, this has been a very high priority for us as a school and we're communicating a lot. Because I don't remember what the number is for the freshman on there. The thirty three, twenty three? That's twenty three freshmen who are chronically absent. And that number, whatever those numbers are, is probably the best attending they're going to have in the time that they're with us. You know, the number grows over time typically. So that is worrisome. For those twenty three students being chronically absent, it's really hard to turn those patterns around. So it's important to intervene as early as possible.
What's really hard about it too, or, you know, the fact that these kids are going to go off to college and professors don't care if you're there or not.
Yes, that's right.
And then you get a job and you know what? Like, if you don't show up, you're not, you know, like, it's a, you know, like a movie growing up, like you had to, it wasn't so much of a choice, you know what I mean? Like you just did it. And I understand the COVID and all that kind of stuff. But I feel like, you know, I don't know. And I understand all the mental stuff and I'll get pushed back from this, but at some point, you got to come to school. You know what I mean? If you want to go to college and get a degree, like you have to go to college, you have to get classes. Like it has to, somewhere it has to start rolling together.
Well, one of the things we've done and credit goes to Mr. McGowan for really leaning into this is we've linked strong attendance to the ability to attend the things like the prom. So prom is coming up, it's in two weeks. And I suspect that number of students who have, number of juniors who are chronically not attending is low is because Mr. McGowan started to communicate in December and in January that said, if your attendance doesn't improve, you're not going to be able to come to a prom. And so when you tether those two things together, which is a very fair, you know, linkage to make as a school, students show up because they want to show up to the prom, which is fair. And we want them to be there as well. So we increasingly are linking social privileges and the really high, high appeal events to student attendance. So we have seniors, there are many seniors who comprise that ninety number who are not going to be able to attend something like, we have a Red Sox night where the, you know, seniors are going to a Red Sox game. There are students who just kind of, their attendance didn't make the grade for that. So we are trying to tie those things together, not in an effort to penalize, but instead in an effort to incentivize.
Can I, not about this, but your career planning. Actually, I was at the gym the other day running and on the, they went to New Mexico and there's a high school that's doing something similar to this where their kids are getting, whether they want to be a nurse or whatever, like they're starting to do all the different internships and it's fascinating. So is this for kids who are, to help them decide what they want to do in college? Or is it also helping kids who may not know if they want to go to college but do something? We had talked about this in a prior meeting.
It really was for anyone, it was for juniors and seniors of non-college going all the way up to the, you know, students who are going to go to some of those competitive schools. So, and it's all, yeah. And I think students' levels of interest and intensity of interest probably vary between those different industry areas. I mean, Cass was participating in that. And so there were students who might not have been all that interested in one area that was not, you know, anything they ever see themselves doing, but they might be really interested in finance and they paid very close attention to that. So we had students who were not going to college at all, absolutely, sitting right along that students who are going to go to some of the best colleges and maybe go to other places.
Okay. How did they get, did they sign up for it?
So we emailed a registration to all juniors and seniors and their parents as well. And we filled pretty quickly. And then that number came down a little bit once people, you know, kind of managed their schedule and saw if they were going to take it. But we invited anybody who would want to take it, if you'd like. And one of the things, Cass had touched on a few other small events that Ms. Kaelin has pulled together. And it's just every week, there's one or two or three more events where there's a new speaker coming in. There's, you know, a lunchtime meeting with, you know, people who have careers in the arts who now she's meeting with some of our school's artists to let them know this is what you could be doing and getting paid to do if you continue this work. So she, I'm very impressed by Ms. Kaelin's work and she's not one to spotlight it all the time. So sometimes I learn about it from Cass at this meeting. But it's very impressive work.
Thank you very much. Then we're going to move on to enrollments.
All right, so in your packet is enrollment data as of March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty four. No significant variances. And I'll turn it over to Becky for the financial reports.
Okay, so the monthly general fund, excuse me, the monthly general fund report as of March thirty first actually represents the first three quarters of fiscal year twenty four. So we only have three months left in this current fiscal year. So the work now, the focus now really turns to what our end of year is going to look like. And we are, have started to do that planning. At the end of March, we did have four hundred and twenty six thousand dollars remaining, or one point six one, which is very close to where we were in the previous year, at the previous time this year. And that was four hundred and forty nine thousand, or one point seven four percent. We have gone through and we have encumbered some additional planned expenses that we have for the remainder of the year. And we have also put together a proposal, or rather a recommendation for our end of year planning and keep.
Yeah, I'm going to try to get up. I think.
In the meantime, I can cover the revenue report. In terms of the revenue for March, it was a relatively quiet month, really a typical month for us. We did receive the March assessments from both towns and those were the March first assessments. You can also see that spring sports has begun because we did see those fees in the month of March. And really, as I said, since we have completed three quarters of the fiscal year, you can see that we're just about at the seventy five percent mark for the revenues that we anticipated receiving for FY twenty four. And it's really just where we want it to be for revenue. Sorry. I can't do it on the Apple.
Keith, if you, I have it up on my screen.
You do? Okay. Thanks. Yeah, no problem.
Just a play by play, they're up to about warrant fifty out of, I think it's sixty five. So it could go for another night.
One more to knock off?
No, we've done it in two nights. It's not normal for a third. Sure wouldn't be for a fourth.
Totally abnormal.
And this is all the zoning bylaws, so I imagine that might be impacted.
All right, so what we've put together is a plan for the remainder of the fiscal year. So just a reminder, excess and deficiency is a fund that all regional school districts do need to maintain as part of our book of accounts. At the end of the year, any surplus money that we have on our bottom line does divert into the E and D fund. And that is according to Massachusetts regulations. Each fall, we submit that information to the Department of Revenue and the Commissioner of Revenue does certify each regional school district's excess and deficiency balance. And just as a reminder, as of this past October, our E and D balance was certified at one million, one hundred twenty seven thousand, five hundred and twenty. Five hundred and twenty dollars. I think the last two nights are catching up. Sorry. We cannot have an excess in our E and D account more than five percent of our current fiscal year's operating budget. And that does include our debt payments as well. Our current E and D balance is at four point zero seven percent. The school committee did establish a policy a few years ago and that is policy D one fifty. And that establishes a range of three point two five to three point seven five as the range that we want to remain in for our E and D. We did, in this past fiscal year, leave a little bit more in that just because of the athletic complex and everything that was going on so that there would be funds available if needed. So part of the analysis that we are doing for the fiscal year end is also looking at where we are with the athletic complex project. You can see that phase one of the athletic complex, our estimated construction budget based on the numbers that were provided to us by Gail, we were at seven million, three hundred ninety one thousand, fifteen dollars. Our bid actually came in at seven point three, so we were very close to what Gail had estimated. But it also only left us with a contingency of ninety one thousand because that original number did include a ten percent contingency in that. The total cost of our approved change orders have been about eighty seven thousand dollars, which means that the amended contract amount is seven million, three hundred eighty seven thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. So the difference between what we estimated and what we have so far approved for the contract is thirty six hundred dollars. So we're very close to that budgeted amount.
And that's no small feat.
It's amazing.
That was a lot of Tuesday morning meetings. In terms of where we are with our bonding, when we went to, before the town meetings last year, the voted amount was seven million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and ninety three dollars. Also approved was the Southborough CPC of two hundred and twenty thousand and that was their Southborough portion of the tennis courts. So really, the intent of the CPC funding was not an additional amount on top of that seven point nine, but rather Southborough's portion of that seven point nine for the tennis courts. So the amount that we have available to bond is seven point seven million dollars. As of today, we have gone out to bond for seven point five million. You can see we've done, we did an initial offering in August of two million. And then we did a second offering of five point five million. And we have that broken out because that second number of the three sixty one is actually Northborough's portion of the tennis courts. So we have internally separated that out so we can keep those two phases of the project separate. So as of right now, we have available to bond two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that would be for the amenities building portion of it. We also are anticipating receipt of the CPC funds from Southborough. So if we move on to the second page, you can see on the second line the combination of both the bonding and the CPC funds. We have four hundred and sixty thousand dollars to use for the amenities building. And we were estimating, or the initial estimates from Gail, were that the amenities building were going to be about four hundred and sixty four thousand, one hundred and fifty five. So we are a little short just off of that estimate. We have been working with RGB. They are our designer on this project and they have put together some cost estimates for the project. Their estimates. Their estimates are for the hard costs, the construction costs, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and, we'll say, thirty-five dollars. And that does include a ten percent contingency. And then some of their soft costs and some of these items that they have listed, there may be some cost savings in here, specifically the permitting and the builder's risk insurance. We can require the builder to carry their own insurance versus us carry insurance. And then the permitting, we can work with the town on those costs as well. But really, the one area that I did want to highlight for you were the design services of one thirty-five. Those were not included in that initial estimate by Gail for the seven point nine. So really, that's where we're seeing the overage with the amenities building because we are anticipating that we are going to be over by about one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. So in terms of looking at where we are with our operational budget for FY twenty-four, you saw that we have about four hundred thousand right now remaining on the bottom line. We're also looking at our special education, um, transportation. I want to thank Caroline Willard in my office. She's really gone through this with a fine-tooth comb. And we have, um, we are anticipating some savings in that line item of one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So what we would propose is to transfer those savings to our regional transportation fund, use those funds to offset our FY twenty-five budgeted transportation costs. And then with the savings that we would then have in our transportation line item in the FY twenty-five operational budget, we could utilize those funds for the amenities building overage construction costs. Any other remaining money on the bottom line would then be diverted into E and D. And we are estimating that if we were to put back between one hundred and seventy thousand or three hundred and fifteen thousand, that would keep our E and D within the school committee range of three point two five to three seven five. So right now, that is the plan that we are operating on, uh, under and wanted to present that to the school committee for their feedback.
So can we use the money from that transportation for the amenities building? We can play with that how, how we want it?
So the money that's in the actual account would have to go towards transportation, but we have budgeted the full amount that we need for our transportation for FY twenty-five. So if we're not using what's in our operational budget, we could then use those funds towards the amenities building.
You done?
Yes.
So you're talking about adding between one hundred and seventy thousand and three hundred and fifteen thousand to the one, two million or so that's already in the E and D?
So we are using six seventy-five to offset the FY twenty-five. That's how we did lower the assessments to the two communities. So we will help to offset that.
So the one point two doesn't have what we took out yet?
That's correct.
Can you use E and D for capital projects?
So the way that you would have to do that is the school committee would have to vote to amend their operational budget to utilize the E and D. We would then let, have to let the towns know. And it's similar to like a debt issuance where then the two towns could call a special town meeting to vote on it. Since we're using E and D, they may not need to because it's nothing that, you know, the town needs to come up with additional funds for. But they would have that ability to call a special town meeting and vote on the operational budget.
And I would just comment that we did map out several different pathways. One of the concerns that we have is the construction project and the design services will not be complete until fiscal twenty-five. We felt like this was the cleanest way to create funding for that shortfall. We have not paid for design services out of bonding. It's been out of operational from the start of this entire project many years ago. And this continues that pattern. So it's really design services that we're, we're funding.
Seems a very large number for design services, but I'm just not in that field. And I guess I, I would appreciate a better understanding of the number.
Yeah, I mean, I think that is well within the scope of what we would expect for this, a scale of project. So it's not, it's not out of the range that we would expect for this project.
Wrong business. But the, what is the savings from the special ed transportation? Does it, we just didn't have out of district?
No, so it's projections. So we project our special education transportation costs. We have students who do not require transportation that we thought they might need transportation. We have students who exit our district for a variety of reasons. So there's savings from changes that we were not anticipating.
I see. It's a lot.
So just for an example, we, you know, we could have one, you know, out of district placement.
One kid going to Perkins and it could be.
It's a significant expense.
And I, and I will say that Helene Desjardins in the student support services area really has been looking at transportation closely this year. She's been making sure that students are being grouped appropriately, you know, being able to share the same, share vans if, if that is appropriate, if they live close to one another, and that was, was not happening. So she, I think through her hard work too, that the savings has come about.
And then I would just add that the transportation budget for the upcoming fiscal year is done almost a year prior. So it's, it's based on the best information we have at that time. And it's not out of the realm that we see a variance from what we projected or estimated and what it actually costs. This is favorable. It's not always favorable.
Thank you.
So the amenities building is the one that has the bathrooms in it currently, correct?
Correct.
So that will stay there for next year then, and then we'll do it afterwards?
There are. We have to give an update on the.
Yeah, so what we're trying to ascertain to come into within the estimates that Becky shared is that we are, the bid is in process right now. And we will have a hard number within a couple of weeks of how much the general contractor cost will be as well as the filed sub bids that accompany that for, for the total cost. So the hope is that, yeah, um, RGB's estimates are high and we come in under that number. So it would be more conservative. But we're going to have a hard number for us to see, you know, within the next few weeks.
We're hoping for a mid-June, late-June start.
That's the town's going to say.
So will it be done by?
Yes.
He promised that it was going to be ready for football.
John's holding me to that.
So the, the positive silver lining is that the bathrooms will be available for graduation for events through the, this school year.
And then what happens with the building on the other side of the football field? Is that gone yet?
No, those two are being, the exterior of those two buildings are being renovated by Asseba Valley currently. One of them is going to be done by the end of this school year and then the second one will start up in the fall.
And is that the snack shack still?
That's the old snack shack and maintenance building to the left of the track.
So I have to say like.
And now it will be storage.
Okay. They're doing a great job at the senior center.
They are. And they actually are doing both projects simultaneously. They were at both projects today. So I talked to the, um, I talked to the teacher who's, he's an amazing guy, Wayne Carlson, who's been very much in communication with me and Mike Gorman about what they're doing. And they have started and hit the ground running. And you can already see some of the shell changes on the old snack shack, which will become a new storage building.
That's awesome. Yeah, I'm at the senior center every week and it's awesome. You're doing just a great job.
Yep, they do.
All right, then. There's no other, you're done. There's no other questions. Do I hear a motion to accept the FY twenty-four monthly general fund expenditure report and the FY twenty-four statement of revenue?
So moved.
Moved by Paul, seconded by John. Any other questions? All those in favor? Oh, until, until off it, sorry. That passes you now. It's like, okay, on to old business. Okay, Keith, just keep on going.
And so actually, you know, what Becky shared really kind of lays things out nicely. And as we did share, the expectation is that the amenities building bids will come in the next few weeks. So we'll have a solid number on that. And the expected construction will happen in the summer of twenty-four, which is in, in line with our real goal of getting it completed before the start of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Accompanied with that, like I mentioned, Asseba Valley is doing some tremendous work. They'll be finishing the snack shack hopefully by the end of the school year. And then we'll start up the maintenance building exterior in the fall of twenty-four. We have that schedule set. The other thing that's worth noting at this point is phase one is still ongoing. Although it looks great, there are a few items that we're trying to tie up now. So in the next couple of weeks, we hope to have the grandstand opened completely. We are also working with the town to make sure that we're covering all of our permitting responsibilities and, and such. So it's, it's, it's getting to that very tender point and making sure we're at substantial completion and doing a good job of crossing every T and dotting every I. So we continue to be working on it daily with the hopes of closing out phase one, um, you know, within the next couple of weeks as well. So it's pretty exciting. And then phase two, what we're defining phase two as is the amenities building renovation, which, you know, Becky just laid out for us and discussed.
And none of this work impacts graduation?
Yeah, we will have everything done before graduate, in other major events for the spring. There's nothing to say otherwise at this point. If, if so, we will work around it and make sure it happens. Right, Sean?
Any questions with you? Okay, moving right along. Policy development and distribution, none at this time. Audience sharing. None at this time. Personnel, well, that's, uh, we've already talked about Kathy. So communications, none at this time. Approvedable bills and payrolls, we do online. Sorry.
Yeah, I would just want to say something.
Audience sharing?
No, communications.
Oh, okay.
Or whatever, audience sharing. So I just wanted to say a couple of things, um, well, it's my last chance. I was talking with Sean earlier and I had the chance to run into Michelle Kellen at many events and have some great conversations with her. And one of the things I told her was that, and she shared with me, is that, you know, she's doing a lot of these great things with like zero budget, you know? So just kind of like for next year, thinking about that and maybe looking into some grants to help these programs along. And then transportation, we've, we've talked about that a lot. And one of the things we don't have here at Algonquin is a small bus or a van or something like that. And so I just think that would be something to really think about, you all, as you look into the budget for next year. Just would really help to get to Southborough instead of just why. Well, but you could also bring small kids though. Instead of getting a whole bus full, which is like five to six hundred dollars, you can get a van. I mean, I know it's a capital expense, but I'm just saying, a lot of high schools have the vans or the small buses. And I, so I let Michelle know that next year, when she comes to present and you guys ask her, if you have everything she needs, that she needs to ask for one of those. So anyway, that's that. And then the other thing I wanted to just acknowledge is that I've been seeing online, um, the spotlights of the graduations from the eighteen to twenty-two year program. Alex, I think, and another student, Mike.
Alec and Will.
Will, yes. And so I just want to acknowledge that and say congratulations and it's great. And I think I might have seen it in the Harbinger online, yeah? So maybe could you put that in the spotlight coming up? Because I think it's important to acknowledge those kids. True, it's awesome. So, thank you all.
And you can always come back for audience sharing.
Yes, I always do that. Front row, yeah.
Anybody else?
Oh, so I, so I need, so since this is my last meeting, I need somebody to start signing the payroll. I did my last one yesterday.
Your official responsibilities don't end until a new, newly duly elected person fills yours.
Oh, okay.
So you have.
So you didn't do the last one.
You have three more weeks.
So there's one more. But if you want to allocate this.
It's online. You're closed anymore.
These DocuSign were very friendly.
Okay. Agenda items for next month. The applied arts department presentation. Reappoint the district treasurer and assistant treasurer, social emotional learning presentation, program of studies. OBAS proposal or OBAS, OBAS?
That's OBAS, that's a transportation provider that we're contracting out with through ABC.
Okay. And twenty twenty-five graduation date. Anything else? Anybody else have any suggestions? Okay.
Other town meeting update?
Oh, maybe.
They're still on fifty.
Oh, no.
The MBTA, they're still on it.
That's why.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So moved?
Well, what's the motion?
We wanted a motion, so I moved it. I'm used to being remote, honey. I moved to adjourn the meeting at eight fifty-five PM. The Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee of April the twenty-fourth, two, twenty twenty-four.
Moved by Joan.
Second.
Seconded by Paul.
Do you want more?
Any discussion? All those in favor, we are adjourned.